Under provision of the public law, public meeting laws of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, the date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, December 12th, 2016 at the administration center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Larson, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda will mail to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Certainly.
By second.
Then moved by Ms. Hawkes and second by Mr. Chabot to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Reber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Harge.
Aye.
Dr. Graves.
Aye.
Take care of both sides, Ms. Hawkes and Ms. Harper.
Aye. So this time we're going to do our December board recognitions.
McClure Jr., Drew Talent qualified for the MSHASAA Boys Swimming and Diving State Championship for the second year in a row after breaking a school record during the season. Drew competed in 100-meter butterfly and 100-meter backstroke. Drew did not medal at the state meet, but improved his time over the previous year. Drew also has earned a 4.24 GPA.
We're going to have a video that shows him being recognized, so we'll just...
Oh, okay. I want to add into this one that his mother was also a McClure swimmer and a Ferguson swimmer all through, from elementary school all the way through, so.
The apple hasn't fallen.
What?
Eric's...
So the apple hasn't fallen. History. McClure North Senior Clinton Hefner qualified for the MSHASAA Double A State Class 4A Cross-Country Meet for a second year. Clinton ran a personal best 16 minutes, 6 seconds, time on the 3.1 mile course to finish 18th overall. Just keep going. McClure South Berkeley Senior Anya Lockett placed second in the American Education Week National Essay Contest and was recognized at the Iota Phi Lambda Sororities Apple for the Teacher Awards luncheon. McClure North Southmore Jalen Kincaid placed third in the essay contest and was recognized at the luncheon as well. Early education teacher Rachel Bobo, Airport and Air Ford, third grade teacher Lucy B. Holloman, and McClure South Berkeley Communication Arts teacher Rochelle Straw Martin, and Bermuda Elementary Library and Assistant Lorenzo K. Poindexter were honored at the Apple for the Teacher Award at the Iota Phi Lambda Alpha Zeta Chapter Luncheon as well. Not special. Video. Oh, there we go. Oh, you're going to have to...
Are you saying that? Have you repeated something?
Hello. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to present to Drew Talent, a student at McClure High School, the certificate for Boy Swimming at the State, Boy Swimming and Diving State Championships. We are so proud of you and congratulations on your work.
Thank you for the award. I greatly appreciate it because I don't usually get awards for swimming, so this is a big thing for me. It means a lot because it's a great accomplishment, especially because I can keep my grades up and swim a lot, so I mean, it's two things I really like to do, so I enjoy it.
We really appreciate Drew. He's a great ambassador for McClure. He is a true student athlete, has a great GPA, participates in multiple sports, and he's won many awards, swimming as well as our sportsmanship and character award multiple times, so we're proud of Drew. He does it all on and off the field in baseball and the pool and swimming.
Hello. I would like to, on behalf of the Board of Education, present to Clinton Hefner, a 12th grader at McClure North High School, for placing in the state class for a cross-country meet. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Just push yourself past any walls that come your way. Congratulating him on placing at the state level and medaling, getting that medal, and next time I run my half marathon, I'll be wishing I had your speed, all right? Thank you.
Hello. The school board of Ferguson-Floreson would like to congratulate Anaya Lockett, a 12th grader at McClure South Berkeley High School, on taking second place in the American Education National Essay Contest. We really appreciate the work that you put into it, and we are very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for congratulating me. Be yourself when you write it, and do be your best, have a couple people, like, give you tips, being teachers instead.
Hello. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present to Jalen Kincaid, who's a 10th grader at McClure North, this certificate for placing third in the American Education Week National Essay Contest. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So congratulations, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Hello.
How are you doing?
I am so excited today to be here to present this award to Ms. Rachel Bobo for getting the Apple for the Teacher Award, and so on behalf of the Board of Education here in Ferguson-Floreson, we would like to congratulate you, and say we're so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Joey Rock.
Thank you, Bobo.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you to all my boys and girls for allowing me to be your teacher and help me learn.
Yay, Miss Bobo, you had a good idea.
This is what it's all about.
Hello. It is my pleasure today to be at Airborne School to present to Ms. Lucy Holliam the Apple for the Teacher Award. On behalf of the school board, Ferguson-Floreson School District, we want to say how proud we are of you, and thank you for all of the work that you do here.
Thank you so much. I'm so proud to receive this. Thank you so much.
I would like to say that I'm very proud to receive the Apple for the Teacher Award, and I love my job, I love teaching, I love how children learn and move forward in their education for me, and they are the bright, brightest part of my day when I come here and work and teach.
It's such a pleasure to be out in the schools and to get, to be around the children and to talk to educators and to listen to their stories and just proud of our students and the things that they're accomplishing, so it was quite a, quite a busy day, but well worth it. At this time, we're going to have our MSBA update, and this portion of the meeting has been allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of special interest to our board members and to our community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the ninth of December. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the upcoming session of the Missouri General Assembly that convenes on January 4th. As a result of the November elections, Republicans maintain supermajority control of both the Missouri House and Senate, and now control the governor's office as well with the election of Eric Bidens. Governor-elect Bidens did not discuss education policy in detail during the campaign, but MSBA's Associate Executive Director for Advocacy Mike Reed says there are some indications of what the governor-elect may push as he assumes office.
He believes in parental choice, it appears, as that's what he stated in the past. I believe that he believes in expansion of charter schools and to allow parents the ability to move their children from one district to another at the discretion of the parent, but that's yet to be seen.
Perhaps the most immediate issue facing Governor-elect Bidens will be the possibility of implementing some budget withholdings during the current fiscal year due to the impact of tax cuts and sluggish revenue growth. Estimates for the potential withholdings range between $200 million and $300 million, and some of that money could come from public schools. Meanwhile, leaders of the General Assembly are saying they will support an education reform agenda during the 2017 session, but it's not clear exactly what that agenda might include. MSBA's Mike Reed says having a Republican governor may encourage legislators to pursue issues they may not have advanced previously due to the threat of a veto by the governor.
I believe the House feel very strongly that they will be moving some ideas that they have not moved in the past. They believe that they have a support in the governor's office where in the past they did not. So I think we will have more discussion of interesting questions concerning public education. Many people call it reform, I call it change. You know, the word reform means certain things, but I believe that there's going to be a lot of questions about what those changes should be.
Reed says some of the issues likely to be considered are those related to student transfers from unaccredited school districts, school choice proposals including vouchers, and additional state tax cuts. He says it's important for school board members to meet with local legislators prior to the beginning of the session to discuss the education issues that could impact your local school district. MSBA will keep you informed about legislative developments during the session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, our Capital Watch video program, our daily updates on Twitter, and through critical issue alerts. And be sure to mark your calendar for the MSBA Legislative Forum scheduled for February 14th in Jefferson City. You can register for that event through the MSBA website. Filing for school board seats up for election in April opens this month. MSBA has a number of free resources available to school board candidates posted on the MSBA website, including a candidate's guide to running for the school board and information on the roles and responsibilities of school boards. Filing for school board seats closes on January 17th. If you were elected to your school board for the first time last April and haven't yet completed your required 16 hours of training, there are only a few opportunities left. You can complete half the training online with remainder in an interactive classroom setting. If you've been appointed to fill a vacancy this year, you are encouraged to complete the training prior to the April election if you are planning to be a candidate. The training provides a solid foundation for effective governance leadership. Check the MSBA website for the dates and locations of the remaining new board member training opportunities. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
At this time, this portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and to the community. We're going to start with Ms. Reber.
Well, hi, everyone. First of all, I'd like to welcome our acting superintendent back into his acting superintendent chair, and maybe, you know, ask him if this is the vision you saw two years ago. Anyway, I have nothing other than to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Make sure you hug somebody, get the full meaning of the spirit of Christmas and tell somebody you love them. With that said, I want to point out my son Jared. Jared, would you, and I want to say I love you, and you, you make my world. Thank you. You went longer than you were supposed to. You poor fellow, but I still do want to be. Hi, good to see all of you, and I want to wish you all Merry Christmas. I'm happy to be here at Christmas time. It's wonderful. And so Merry Christmas, and I'm not going to say anything because we're going to pick this up in January, and, but, thank you for coming and for being great supports to this district. Merry Christmas again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have about 10 pages to save. Because no one else is saying anything. Good evening. My area of the strategic plan is networking, which was formerly known as stakeholder and community engagement. The district staff has been working on several initiatives to engage with our community. As I've shared over the last several months, the rebranding effort is well underway on our new website. Right now, it's under construction, so it doesn't look like it's going to look like, but I promise you, it's going to be dynamite. You will love it. It's going to have a user-friendly experience for all stakeholders with features such as translations to other languages, easy accessibilities from your phone or mobile device, quick links from the homepage and less scrolling and searching to find what you need. There will be sections for parents, students, staff, and the community, and the new website will be delivered January, around January 9th, and it'll go live the end of the week of January. And we want to remind parents that it's important to keep your contact information updated with the district, especially as we enter these winter months and inclement weather. The district will be launching a partnership in the next few days with PST World. PST World provides a website-based opportunity for students and parents to report bullying, community activity, and other threats directly to district safety and security staff. Expect to hear more about this important safety initiative in the coming days. And thanks to the generosity of the Crossing Church and their donation to cover the cost of background checks, we now have over 100 reading champion volunteers reading with students in four of our elementary schools. We have Bermuda, Holman, Lee Hamilton, and Walnut Grove, and the program is expanding to Deshane and Central Elementary immediately after the winter break. And on a lighter note, several staff and board members enjoyed breaking a code to participate in the Ferguson Northern Lights Parade Thanksgiving weekend. It was a very good parade. There will be Martin Luther King events going on the weekend before the Martin Luther King holiday, and these are just a few of the ways our district is engaging in our schools and communities. And I want to say, since I've been on the board since April, I want to let you know, this is very touching to me, so excuse me, the support Dr. Davis and his board has really helped me get through everything. They have been so supportive, showed me a lot of love, and I really appreciate everybody. Just want to let you know, I am just so happy and grateful, and for the staff and teachers, administration staff that you all have shown me, I just want to say thank you for all you have done, because I could not, I mean, it's a lot to learn, it's challenging, but I love it, and I love you, and you all have been so good to me, just like a family. And last but least, Kevin Hampton, I want to give a big thank you for him, because without him, he's my partner, he's gauging his stakeholder, I would be moaning and stuttering all over the place, so a big thank, thank you to you. And I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and have a prosperous new year. Thank you.
Reber, everyone.
A hard act to follow. My portion of the strategic plan is student achievement. I had the pleasure of working with my team, and just to get more information what's going on in the district, to increase math science scores, a science plan was put together with input from teachers and pre-K through 12 science committee. A part of the plan is for the fourth and fifth grade teachers to receive professional development to increase their comfort with teaching science. Professional development training continues to occur in the district. A huge focus has been on curriculum writing in chem systems, science, and math. In addition, teachers have been working in lab classrooms, and we now have a list of model classrooms for teachers across the district to observe best practices. Our data team created a document for each high school to access pertinent graduation information in one easy location. This form was created to allow important contacts being made regarding the supports, conversations, and plans made with at-risk students. Each high school is in the process of creating an ACT prep plan for this year. In addition, the course catalog is in the process of being created in real time and will be available on that website that Connie just talked about. In addition, our high school transcript analysis tool has been created to locate and track students at risk of not graduating and to look at students who may be deficient in credits. So a lot of the things that are being created by this team have gone based off of our math scores, which is really great. And then in closing, we are in the process of finalizing admissions for the STEAM gifted school. There will be a town hall meeting January 17th at McClure North. After the town hall meeting, parents will be available to, will be able to complete the application online or at the pro, or at pro, the admissions office, hold it, and vote. We are collaborating with the Springfield School District to begin the IB implementation in our high schools, and then on January 9th, we will have our accelerated reading kickoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chabot.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a pretty productive last few weeks, at least on facilities and the district-wise, since we dropped the bombshell regarding the new STEAM school that we're going to be building. Lucky for me, it did not include a bunch of meetings I had to attend, but they did want me to let you all know that the demolition for the new STEAM school has begun. They started tearing out the ceilings in there to expose all the wires and pipings and so forth, and the district's been working with the architects and the general contractors with the timeline so we can start moving with this wonderful project that our school district is taking on. I attended the governing council meeting recently, and they're trying to put together kind of a promotional, marketing, informational-type package to get the community and as well as our fellow board members and the districts to build a better partnership, show how we collaborate with each other. One of the suggestions that did come up was that they'll start providing each individual board member updates regards to SSD and the impact that particular school districts and things are doing throughout the entire region. One idea came up was similar to what MSBA's done, maybe do a brief, you know, one-minute, two-minute video on that. They're also asking for, they need parent involvement with their parent action committees, so if you're an individual who has passion in that area, if you have a child that's receiving services, they definitely would wish for you to step up and participate and have your voice heard with that. Tomorrow, the city of Ferguson Police Department is having a program called Shop with a Cop, and they have adopted, I think, five or six of our elementary schools in the Ferguson area, they went out, they gave each child, I'm not sure of the criteria, how it was picked, but they, there's about 63 students, if I remember correctly, and they gave them the option of picking four toys, as well as a coat, and then the police department went out, did the shopping, so tomorrow, the school district's picking the kids up, so I'm very grateful that the school district's providing that transportation, take them to the Ferguson Community Center where the, our students are able to shop with the cop for Christmas. And that's tomorrow, 10 o'clock, I believe, so. That's all I have, so thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkes.
I am on the talent committee of the strategic plan, and our Grow Your Own participants are beginning to shadow the building principles, and they will be fulfilling 10 hours in the following leadership standards. Vision, mission, and goals. Standard two is teaching and learning. Standard three is management of organizational systems. Standard four is collaboration with families and stakeholders. Standard six, five, can't count, is ethics and integrity, and standard six is professional development. The NEE utilization and mastery, we provide NEE training around units of instruction to the NEE cohort group in order to support building teachers in November on a half-day NEA, NEE work day, and we also provide the building principles with training around the NEE professional development plans and building improvement plans. Retention and recruitment of a diverse workforce for STEAM candidate recruitment. HR team members and FFSD Science Coordinator Eric Cadley continue to meet with UMSL STEAM candidates in an effort to establish a STEM pipeline for the district. Tamika Buford and Eric met with over 100 pre-service teachers to include the STEM-focused NOS scholars on December 2nd. Tamika and Eric shared the various STEM teaching opportunities in the district and also discussed the new STEAM Academy set to open in the fall of 2017. And I would also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Connie, this is a family, and we are very glad that you're now our baby sister, our youngest member of our family, and you've done a marvelous job this year, so thank you for being part of us.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hawkes. Happy holidays to all of you, and however you celebrate your holidays, the one thing that I'd like to say too is just be in the moment, you know, the shopping and the running around, and let's not forget what this holiday is about, and it really is about family. And talking about family, one of the things that I wrote that I wanted to talk about is to say it's such a pleasure to work on the board. We get some heavy stuff sometimes, but one thing that we're finding is, no matter what side of the situation, which side we stand on, one of the things that happens is we still stand together at the end of the day, and so I just want to say to you, Connie, I felt the same way coming in, and I feel that sense of family, and we need that because we're doing some good work and some difficult work. Also, I just want to let everyone know that Dr. Davis is out working. He is at a training, he truly believes in professional development, not only for his staff and for the board, but for himself, and he also wanted me to say, to make sure that I said "at no cost to the district." Wants to make sure that we say that. I want to say thank you also to McClure North singers who were in the lobby who sang to us earlier today. Again, it's so wonderful just to see our students in action and to see the talent that we have in this district. We can do anything that we set our minds to do, and I was very proud of those students, and thank you for the teachers and everyone else who worked with the students to have them here today. I also had an opportunity to, Rob and I, to see Prove in Action. We came to a, what was it called, Inventors?
Ideas Builders.
Ide- Ideal Builders. What's that one? Okay. Yesterday, it was fantastic. Students, sixth grade students had, they were charged with coming up with an invention that they needed in the classroom, and some of the ideas were just so wonderful. They also did a prototype, and they came up and they did a speech, so they did the public speaking, they talked about their, their plans, they talked about the idea, why it worked, how much it would cost, what they would need if it went to market, all of these things, this is sixth grade, all of these things that, you know, you need to think about, and we think about as adults, we think about coming up with some type of invention, and many of the ideas, I know that they can be used, and they probably, hopefully they'll go forward with some of those ideas, but just to see the light in their eyes as they talk about their plans and their ideas was just really exciting for me, which makes it even more exciting as we think about the STEAM school that we're about to open. We want to say from the board, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for giving us the opportunity. opportunity to open this STEAM school. I think it's going to make a huge impact on our district, and we couldn't do it without you, so thank you for your support. And I think that it's open. Now, our interim superintendent, no. We've been teasing Mr. LaRue, Dr. LaRue, for a while because he's sitting in for Dr. Davis today, so.
This will be real easy. Dr. Davis had one wish for everybody. As we wind down first semester, you know, getting ready to start finals here in a couple of days, he wanted to convey to everyone that his hope for you all, the district, is for a Merry Christmas to be had, and we're looking forward to the work that we have ahead of us in the second semester. So with that, that's what I have.
What? No. Okay. Moving on with the agenda. Declaration of candidacy. The three-year terms of Ferguson-Florissant School Board members, Dr. Donna Paulette Thurman and Robert Chabot, and the one-year term of board member Keith Brown expire in April of 2017. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up in the office of the superintendent at 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri, from 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on days the district is open. Under Missouri law, the first day to file as a candidate was Tuesday, December 13, 2016. Filing closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 17. School district offices will be closed on Thursday, December 22nd, through Wednesday, January 4th, 2017, and on January 16th, 2017. The annual election for the Board of Education is Tuesday, April 4th, 2017. Any person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, be at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year, and in addition, the candidate must follow these procedures. File a declaration of candidacy, file pursuant to district policy 4013. The Ferguson-Florissant School District Board election in April 2017 will be conducted by cumulative voting, a change ordered by the federal court. In cumulative voting, voters cast as many votes as there are seats. Voters are not limited to giving only one vote to a candidate. Instead, they can give multiple votes to one or more candidates. For instance, in this election, for three open board seats, voters can choose to give one vote each to three different candidates. Two votes to one candidate and one to another candidate, or all three votes to a single candidate. At this time, we want to acknowledge those who may be in the audience and those who will, who have already signed or filed to run for the board for the 2017, in April 2017. And I would say, I am one, I did file on Tuesday.
I also filed.
Anyone in the audience, if you're here, if you would come up and introduce yourselves and let us know who you are, and come to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Ponder, and I filed on Tuesday. Just a little bit about me, I'm a very active and proud member of this community, a lifelong resident of Florissant. I have a one-year-old daughter that participates in the Parents' Teacher Program, and I'm a teacher at Riverview Gardens. Nice to meet everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I, just if I knew I was going to do this, I would have done something else with my hair. My name is Rachel Proudie. I also filed on Tuesday. I am a native of Ferguson, Missouri, where I also reside. I'm also a teacher. I am certified school counselor in Texas, Louisiana, and Missouri. I am very active in the community of Ferguson and look forward to working with everyone to help provide good educational opportunities for all of our kids.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
How many have filed so far?
Five. Five, okay. Okay. Public comments. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, and email address and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed to, up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium. Identify yourselves, and in keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board may not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. At this time, if there's anyone else who wants to make a comment, please fill out your card. And we have Ms. Randazzo. Hi. Carolyn.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Randazzo, and I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of Metropolitan Congregations United, Educators for Social Justice, Focus St. Louis Impact Fellows, Forward Through Ferguson, Ready By 21 St. Louis, and West County Community Action Network to thank Gary Beals, I don't know if he's here tonight or not, for representing our district at the Regional School Assembly that we held on November 13. He represented our district and the commitment that our board made to taking a real strong look at out-of-school suspension and reducing that. Our district is one of 18 who made that commitment that day. That commitment, we had two districts who made a commitment to change policy within the next two years, and one district who made the commitment to change policy in the next year. We talked to, I believe, 30 school districts altogether in St. Louis County and St. Charles County. We had commitments from 23, is where I think we are now, out of the 30. So we're real pleased, and I just want to thank our board and Mr. Beals for representing us at that assembly. And to let you know, this, we're not finished. This was kind of just the beginning. We're really looking at how we can support this, looking at out-of-school suspension and coming up with the resources and the supports that we heard that most of the districts are looking for and needing. And we have more groups around the community who are wanting to join in with the group, the group of groups I named earlier. So we're really excited about that, and we're ready to help in any way we can. All of our districts in St. Louis County and St. Charles County, St. Louis Public has already changed the policy and are a good resource for kind of how to go about doing that and to change the wording in that policy. So we're really excited to keep on working, and I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to Mr. Beals for being there.
Thank you for the work that you do, I tell you. It's a careless, careless work. Sandra Butler.
So I just wanted to comment on the declaration or the new procedure for applying for candidacy for the board. And in particular, I wanted to mention or talk about, I understand that the board has decided to challenge the court decision, and obviously that is the board's prerogative. But I would like to, I don't know if we could have a forum or something like that where the board can explain to the residents exactly what their thinking is on that. I have heard or read in the paper that generally the thinking appears to be that it's not needed. And I guess that, to me, that would be substituting the board's opinion for that of the court. So I'm hoping that the reason is deeper than we don't need it, because evidently that was heard in a court of law, and the court decided that it was a thing to do. I do hope that this board has also taken to consideration that the option chosen by the court was the least disruptive option of cumulative voting. Could have been member districts or something like that, which would have been more complex and harder for us to explain and implement. But this is the most, the most, least disruptive, easiest to transition to. And also, I want to acknowledge that, that the board did have the option to come up with its own, own solutions and chose not to do that. And the ACLU and the other team came up with three, series of three, and the judge selected, and they recommended cumulative as the least disruptive, and the judge selected, went with their recommendation. And I just need to understand, I would like to understand the board's position a little bit better, other than we don't need it, we're fine the way we are, we're fine the way we always have been. Because one thing this district has always been is, is on the cutting edge, and it used to be very innovative, and not a district that was, we do what we always did. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will, the administration presents the following items for approval under the consent agenda.
All right. Disbursements, payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $8,778,974.27. Operational disbursements of $3,647,093.47, a grand total of $12,426,67.74.
All those in favor of accepting the...
I move that we accept the consent.
Sorry. Step right over. Thank you for that motion. All those in favor. Any opposed? Thank you. Under business, our school year calendar, first reading, Dr. Boye.
Thank you. Good evening, board. The calendar committee, which met for five sessions, recommends the attached draft calendars to the Board of Education for the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years. The calendars are presented as a first reading for the Board of Education. Following the FFNA and FFSD negotiations this spring, the calendars will be brought back to the Board of Education in its final form for consideration as a second reading and final approval.
Just for informational purposes today's... Let's go on to suspension of policy 3034.1, admission of non-resident students.
Good evening.
There she is.
Hi, hi. Good evening. Current district policy allows for non-resident transfer students, excuse me, from unaccredited school districts to attend Ferguson-Florissant School District schools pursuant to Section 167.131 revised statutes of Missouri. The decision to grant Riverview Gardens School District provisional accreditation by the State Board of Education necessitates a suspension of policy 3034.1 for currently attending transfer students from Riverview Gardens. The suspension is for the purpose of eligible Riverview Gardens transfer students to continue receiving an education in Ferguson-Florissant schools for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year for education transition purposes as outlined in the memorandum of understanding approved on November 30, 2016. The suspension may also apply for eligible students who have earned senior status for the 2017-2018 school year, also outlined in the memorandum of understanding.
I have a motion to accept the suspension of policy 30, I'm sorry, 3034.1.
Go move.
Seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Annual audit report. Ms. Madrusik.
The annual audit of the district's financial operation for the 15-16 school year has been completed by our certified public accounting firm, Shaw, Walter &amp; Jabori. The board has received a copy of the audit. I also have copies of, the bound copies here, if you'd rather have that to look at. And we also have a representative from Shaw, Walter here to discuss the audit. His name's Jim Torri, and he is the, he's from Shaw, Walter, Jabori, and he's going to talk to you about the audit.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I want to give you a brief summary of each of the reports that were issued as a result of the audit. First, I'd like to start with the financial statements. Your financial statements are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. On page one of the financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. In that report, we give our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. With regard to federal and state reporting, we noted instances of deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we are required to report. We also noted findings over compliance and internal control that we are required to report related to your federal award programs. With regard to the June 30, 2016, financial highlights, the district ended the year with a total fund balance of approximately $32.5 million. In the operating funds, the total fund balance was approximately $21.8 million. Of that amount, approximately $17.3 million is unassigned or unreserved. This represents approximately 13.9% of 2016 expenditures in those funds. In addition to the audit report, we also issued a report on internal control-related matters and advisory comments. In this report, we have communicated to the board the deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting and non-compliance over federal awards that I noted earlier, along with other suggestions for improving internal control and operating efficiency. In addition, we have also provided an update as to the status of our prior year comments. And finally, we issued a report titled Report to the Board of Education, which includes required communication with those charged with governance, which is the board at the conclusion of an audit. And at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have regarding the audits.
May I have a motion? I have a question. I move that we accept the auditor's report.
Aye.
So you had noted some deficiencies that you have to report.
Yes.
What were those deficiencies?
Those are included in the report, Report on Internal Control-Related Matters and Advisory Comments. To summarize, we are recommending some improvements to the bank reconciliation process, and we are also noted some, some instances with two of your federal programs that require some remedies to some situations that we, that we found. And in the report, the district management has, has responded, given their response to those findings, and will also provide an action plan to remedy those, those findings.
What were those two programs?
The Child Nutrition Program and Title I Program.
Do you have a timeline when those deficiencies will be addressed and reported back?
The one for Title I was just the timing of the signing of certificates, and so that will be addressed in this year. They were signed too early instead of... They were signed too early instead of being signed in the one. And the Child Nutrition Cluster was, they are required to...
There needs to be onsite reviews in, in February, at least by, by February, I forget the exact date in February, onsite review. Each school has a food program and two of those, two of those onsite reviews were not done timely. So, again, it's not, it's not a difficult, those are difficult fixes, it's just, those are requirements of those federal programs that we have to report on if you don't comply with those. So, they are not difficult fixes, it's just, you know, just got to, you know, be aware of those requirements and make sure that, that they're complied with.
And those people who are responsible for those duties have... Okay, you had three things. The district management...
There are three reports, reports to the Board, the financial reports, and then four on internal controls.
No, that was, this was part of the deficiencies.
And the other one was bank reconciliation.
Bank reconciliation. The federal program, the two federal programs, and what was...
The nutrition cluster.
Right, I got that part, but then there was one more?
Title I certification signs.
So, those are the...
Those were the two federal programs.
Right, and then the bank reconciliation is the other one. So, those are, those are the deficiencies that we are required to report.
Okay.
And like I said, we also had other, other suggestions. Don't necessarily have to be in writing, but other suggestions that we provide to the district for their, for your consideration.
Any other questions? If not, all those...
Can I vote or just...
No, I don't think so. So, all those in favor of accepting the report? All those who were in favor of accepting the, the annual audit report?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our certificate of participation, our lease bond, Ms. Madrusik.
Administration is seeking approval of a resolution approving the project under Section 177.088 of the Missouri statutes as amended and certain documents relating to the delivery of $4,955,000 of principal amount of certificates of participations Series 2016. This resolution will allow the Ferguson-Florissant School District to enter into a lease purchase agreement with UMB Bank in order to finance the property located at 8821, 8855, 8911, and 8915 Dunn Road in Hazelwood, Missouri.
May I have a motion?
Send it.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. And this is Lorenzo. So, we did sell the certificates of participation today and Lorenzo Boyd with Stiefel Nicholas is here to answer any questions that you may have. Sorry.
Anything you want to share with us or...
Well, thanks for having me back. Well, on today, we sold $4,995,000 of certificates of participation to fund the project that Ms. Madrusik mentioned. Through that process, about three weeks ago, we went through the same affirmation process to a standard of course to go with the district's underlying credit rating of A+, which was affirmed at A+ and stable. And with this, the certificates of participation were rated A, so we're very pleased with that outcome as well. So, we sold those certificates and we expect to close on December 28, three days after Christmas and we all will have a Merry Christmas.
And then, just, because Donna and I sat through the meetings when we were signing all the paperwork, that, my understanding, you said it's a 20-year lease arrangement.
Right.
What's the calculation per year?
It was approximately 100...
I'll tell you right in a second.
It's, it starts at 154,000 and at the end of the 20 years, it'll be $372,000. So, it's a progressive increase.
And with the lease purchase agreement, is there any incentives for us to just pay it off early, other than just release the debt or...
So, we do have an optional call provision on 5/1/2025 so that you can call the certificates at a later date at 5/1/2025 should interest rates lower themselves. Or there is an option where some school districts do take on at some point. It's been a recent trend of most school districts to actually refinance their certificates into general obligation bonds at a later date, you know, like six or seven years from the date to get them going at a lower interest rate. So, those options are available to the school district.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of accepting this certificate of participation in lease bond in the form that it is in right now? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
All right, thanks, everyone. Thank you.
At this time, if you go to the fourth, there's another page, sure. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. I have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
It's been moved by Ms. Hard and seconded by Mr. Chabot that we adjourn at this time. Again, I want to say thank you for your time and happy holidays on these days and we are now adjourned.